Well, good evening, everyone. We're going to call the Order of the Village of Belleville Board of Trustees Meeting for Monday, October 21st.
President Larson.
President.
Trustee Spainan.
Here.
Trustee Kazmar. Trustee Ward. Ziegler.
Here.
Here virtually. And trustee Zerbis.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Was the meeting posted?
The meeting was posted as required by law.
A first item on the agenda is public participation. So, public participation allows citizens to be heard on any agenda and non-agenda item. The public may also comment during the public participation section of each item. Village Board shall make no decisions or consideration of action of citizen comments for items not on the agenda, except to refer the matter to the village administrator for administrative consideration, or to schedule the matter for board consideration at a later date. And just to be clear, I'm assuming many of you are here for tonight for the Depot conversation. There will be plenty of public comment time allocated during that. So, you're certainly welcome to comment now, but this is really more for non-agenda items now versus agenda items. So, if anybody would like to speak on a non-agenda item, please take the chair, state your name, give you approximately three minutes. Thanks, Connie. At the table, actually, is fine if you want to do it there. Correct.
Connie Erfer, Belleville. I am asking you what happened about the conversation with the lawyer for the deque. I haven't heard a thing since it was voted on to call him, talk to him, and get it all straightened out.
We've been trying to reach out to him. The attorneys in California have not answered Rick's emails. I've called about six or seven times and about, you know, we're still reaching out, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Anyone else that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay. Next is consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests it, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered the first item after the approval of the consent agenda. And items listed are the village board meeting minutes from October 7th, October 8th, and October 14th. Motion by Mike, seconded by Maxine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. So, next is discuss and consider an appointment to the vacant Board of Trustees seat. And Gabe, I'm going to hand it over to you.
So, is Gary still considered one of the candidates, or what? So, if we consider him, but he won't get the questions asked? Okay.
Connie, did you have a question? Sorry. And sorry, we were just discussing whether we wanted to have the candidates to both be present, or to have one step out, do one interview, and then have the other one step out when the other one's doing the interview. And I think that sounds like the consensus is to have one step out while we do the interview. Which one goes first? Rock, paper, scissors? Okay. Okay. So, unless others want to ask questions, I'm certainly happy to hand off that responsibility. But it sounds like you're going to hear from me, so, sorry, sorry in advance. So, please introduce yourself and share why you're interested in serving on the board.
Is this on? My name is Amy Kubli. I live in the village of Belleville, right across from the train station. And I have lived here for 13 years. I work for the Department of Natural Resources as a drinking water engineer. And I actually regulated you guys' system until about two and a half weeks ago, when we moved it to a Green County system. So, my young engineer that I trained now is a regulator. And I just, I applied to this position because I also coached soccer, and it's going to be in my offseason that the trustee, you know, the six months would be. And I just wanted to, you know, see if I could offer my services and my knowledge of how like a well-run utility or well-run village that I know from my personal experiences in my profession, I thought that might be an asset to the village. If you're interested in using my services, obviously.
Second question sort of follows up on that, I guess, a little bit. You might have already answered this for the most part. But what value do you think you can bring to this organization?
Thanks. Just what I said, actually. I know what a bad utility looks like. I know what a good utility, especially, you know, drinking water, but also wastewater, because in a lot of the communities I regulated, it's usually the same people, which is somewhat the situation here, too. So, and, you know, I really, I understand what needs to be done to like make utilities sustainable financially, because I look at that when I do my inspections of the other systems in Dane County, what it needs to look like to run programs, like a private well program in a utility, things like that. So, I think my knowledge of that could be helpful as a trustee.
Thank you. Next, please share a time in which you disagreed with someone, but were able to work collaboratively with them.
Got a few from last week, actually. I have a challenging situation in a community in Rock County that where every single village employee will be gone by the end of this week, including the police chief, the water operator, wastewater operator, the director of public works, the clerk, and the deputy clerk, all gone within about two months. And I had to talk to the village president on the phone end of last week. I don't remember what day. And, you know, I disagreed with a lot of the things that he had done for managing that utility and the way that he treated his employees. But I was able to work with him, as he is now our like only legal contact with the village. We have to work with them, even though I may not have seen eye to eye on the way he managed his village. I was able to work with him and offer my technical expertise to him. So, if they lose power to their water tower like they did on Wednesday, he knows what to do, you know, like just to help him out. Yeah, it's dire. I'm not committing the village, but.
That's a good answer. Hopefully, we don't have that relationship here, right? I will take your calls, Amy, I promise, but it won't be, hopefully, it wouldn't be contentious. So, next is, what are your three main issues or concerns impacting the village?
Because I have one that I am very concerned about. The contract that money that we are spending in certain places is a big concern of mine. Very special contract. That I can, I think by the end of the year, we can be off of it. So, that's kind of my crusade and really one of the reasons I applied to the board position. It's, yeah, I think you know what I'm talking about. I can say it if you want me to, or no?
I don't think I'm going to hold you to that.
Okay, okay.
Are there any other issues that that's the big one?
Of course, yes, that's a big one, obviously. That's the most greater right there. But I think it's a great village. I think we, you know, are growing a lot. I know we're growing a lot, actually. I was just at the water inspection a month ago, and we talked about that with Gabe, as far as expanding the, you know, the distribution system and how the new well is great, because we couldn't do the expansion without it, basically. So, yeah, I think that that is big, being able to expand in a way that infrastructure follows it, not just green space, but, you know, water mains, water, you know, wells, tanks. We might need an elevated tank at some point if we're really going to expand into the higher elevations in town. I don't foresee that happening, but, you know, 10, 20, 30 years down the road, you've got to think about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
You kind of answered this, but what is the village doing well?
Well, what you're doing well, you have great people working for you, and I think that's important. You have to have people that like believe in their mission of, you know, working for the village and making it a better place. I think you're doing that very well. You have limited resources compared to the Madison and the dirt and Moniquees, you know. But I think you're using those in a manner that is benefiting the public and the people who live here in a way that is, you know, it's in a good way. You're using them as efficiently as you can. And I want to help you guys do that maybe even more efficiently with my knowledge of how to submit your drinking water reports and your wastewater reports and getting just, you know, data entry for that, that type of thing. Like, I can do that tomorrow for you if you want, you know, or have Lauren do it.
Wonderful. Thank you. And then I'm going to ask a separate question that wasn't on the list, but you mentioned that you're a soccer coach and you're in the offseason. So, when does that season start? Or maybe a different way of framing the question, would you be planning to run for election in the spring? Or do you really kind of view this as sort of a short-term role?
Thank you. It's actually perfect, because we usually start practicing in the spring, spring break if the weather's good, and it's not, we'll see in the field. But usually, like, first week of April, so that's election week, basically, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, I can definitely do it for six months if that's what you want, and I would definitely consider running, but I can't see where to start. I'll try it out and see how I feel. How many months is it to declare yes or no? One, month and a half?
It would be mid-December to complete the non-candidacy paperwork, and the sex is the first Tuesday in January to have your candidacy paperwork yet.
What happens if you don't do your, if you don't want to do it, but you don't do that on time?
Then that requires more work from me, so I would ask that you turn that in on time. Thank you.
What are the repercussions if I wait till January and say I don't want to do it after all?
So, if you waited till January, then we have to post notice that the position is still open. We have to extend the time where other people could put in the paperwork for candidacy, basically.
So, there'd be like one meeting.
So, it would be like three meetings. So, November, all of November, the first half of December before that declaration of non-candidacy is due.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, do you have any follow-up questions for us?
I think that was the main one, actually, about running and when I needed to declare that. That's answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. If you could send Shelley in, or we can. Shelley. So, you can use the mic. If you push the button, it'll come up. That'll mean it's on. If it's down, it's off. So, we're going to give you the same questions, or try to give you the same questions. So, first, please introduce yourself and share why you're interested in serving on the board.
Shelley, I call Crowe Belleville. And I've always been interested on being on the board. I just haven't had the opportunity. And since this arose, I thought this would be a good time to put my name in and get in here.
And what values do you think you can bring to the organization?
Fairness, honesty, openness. And those are the main things that make a good board member.
Please share a time in which you disagreed with someone, but were able to work collaboratively with them.
Every day in my job. Since I work in project coordination, there's always conflict. One person thinks something should be done one way, another person thinks it should be done another way. So, my role basically is to kind of play the mediator and bring the departments together and work out a solution that works for everyone. And I think the easiest way to do that is just to talk, rather than be at each other's throats.
And I'm sorry, I'm taking notes as I absorb things that way, so I apologize. What are your three main issues or concerns impacting the village?
There's so many. And I think, well, that's obviously why a lot of people are here, is I think, for me, decisions that were made previously by previous boards, I know you guys are trying to sort those out, iron those out, but I feel like in some senses, we're going backwards, because there's not as much transparency as there should be, I think. Which I feel is super important, especially for the community members, you know. That's the one thing I hear the most, is there's just a lack. I know there's been discussions around the police department. That's something that needs to be a little more, people need to be a little more open about what's going on there. And I think, just in general, where the direction that the village is going. You know, there's so much growth, and it's happening at a really fast pace. I think that's just a concern with everybody, is how can we make this growth happen in a, in a better way?
Good answers. Thank you. And what is the village doing well?
We're growing, you know, and obviously with Main Street booming, we're bringing businesses to town. I'm super excited about Top House coming, super excited about Johnny O's being on Main Street. I think, I mean, you drive down Main Street at any given time on a Tuesday night, and it's, there's cars everywhere, which is what this village needed. And I think it's going to make a big impact.
And then, I asked the same question. It's not on the list, but I think you already expressed it.
You got it, but you can't see it.
In the spring as well. So, it's not just to fill the role now, but you actually have an interest in running in the spring. And then, do you have any follow-up questions for us as a board?
No, I don't think so. I think I know you all pretty well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because let's see who's in on it. Bill Eichelkraut, Cindy somebody, Art somebody, JB somebody, Jeff Larson, Dave somebody. I can't hear him hardly.
Thank you. Okay, so, discussion, I guess. Does anybody want to lead us off?
Jeff, this is Gary Ziegler. If there was a motion, I didn't hear it. You guys are cutting in and out badly.
Three candidates, so.
Four to three with two in the room, yes. Yeah, I would say for me, it's down to the two that showed up, but that's my take on it. Sure. Jerry Ziegler. Yeah, so the other two candidates, Jerry Ziegler and Hunter Bergy, who's on our police committee, but he withdrew just from time commitment. He didn't think he had time, so, yep.
I guess I'll kick off a comment question regarding Amy's experience with the DNR and water utility, I think is, you know, certainly something valuable and can provide us insight with. But in one of her comments, you know, she made it sound like she'd be submitting reports and things, which I don't think that's the job of a trustee, so.
Any other comments? Everybody's really nervous to talk. I don't, it might be, but I'm, I don't, I'm fine with you being here. I just, like, it's not intended to be contentious or anything. So, it's not, like, even if it was, I would still want you here, because if we had questions, you'd have the opportunity to answer. So, it's not, I'm not really too concerned about that. I mean, I will say frankly, and I appreciate both of them certainly putting their names in ahead. I think Amy, I don't have concerns. I think you're both wonderful candidates and certainly encourage you to run in the spring. I do have some side concerns with Amy, just because your husband is an employee, so there's a little bit of, you know, you'd have to recuse yourself from anything. We talked about that, obviously, but there's some potential restrictions, limitations there that are a little bit more concerning. I mean, I think Shelley's openly stating she definitely wants to run for election in the spring, so that's also kind of weighs into my take on things. I would love to have Amy come and join committees, because I think she'd be super valuable in a lot of different ways for the village. So, no, you're fine. Yeah, please, yeah. Sure. No, absolutely. Sure. No, absolutely. Appreciate it, so. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I have a question. Shelley, you're on the fire department. Fire department has their meetings on Monday night. How would that, how would you deal with the conflict? Oh, there you are. Oh, you did. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions?
Do we want to make a motion, or?
We'd have, yeah, we'd have to make a nomination if we wanted to have somebody on the board.
I'll make one, throw it out there, and see what happens. Make a motion to appoint Michelle Eichelkraut to fill the vacant Board of Trustees seat effective October 22nd for the term ending effective April 1st, 2025.
Okay, we've got a motion by Mike, a seconded by Maxine. Further discussion? I'm just going to say I'm going to take Amy up on her offer as well, so, but I'm absolutely in support of the motion, but there are actually three board trustees that are part of the Parks or the Public Works Committee, and then we actually have resident members as well. So, we expanded that within the last year, basically. We do that with all of our standing committees now, so, yeah. So, there's definitely an opportunity, whether you run or not. We will have positions available, so. So, okay, so we've got a motion by Mike, seconded by Maxine. I'm going to do this as a roll call, if you don't mind.
All right. Trustee Bainan.
Aye.
Trustee Kazmar. Trustee Ward. Trustee Ziegler.
Aye.
Trustee Zerbis.
Yes.
President Larson.
Yes.
Passes on a six to zero.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both.
Jeff, I have a question.
Gary, did you have a question?
Yeah, the term does not end on April 1st, I don't believe. I tried to get in, but apparently you couldn't hear me. Ends on the.
Yeah, we can hear you. I think it, I think, yeah, we have to check the specific date, but it ends this April, I believe.
Yeah, the third Tuesday in April, the news shifts begin.
So, it's going to end the 14th of April would be the end date. The organizational meeting would be on April 15th, 2025.
Welcome. Okay. 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 So, next is discuss and consider the Village Depot presentations.
Can we do the news and announcements first?
Sure, absolutely. Yes.
No, those were the dates that the attorney wanted us to use. But you can amend the second date if you want, but he wanted the first date to be tomorrow, because that's when you have to do your oath.
Technically, yeah, April 1st would be too early, because there'll be a meeting that that trustee wouldn't be on the, I might have the dates wrong. I'm looking at the April calendar. The first Monday would be the 7th of April, and the organizational meeting is on the 15th, because the first day of April is Tuesday. It's a little odd.
And you often don't have a first meeting in April.
So, instead of using dates, can we just use the term? I guess the question is, how do we fix it from a motion standpoint?
Well, if you want, just make a new motion, I guess, yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to appoint Michelle Eichelkraut to we'll change the date of the appointment from tomorrow, October 22nd, to the end of the term ending in April of 2024. 25, excuse me. I wanted some time back, okay. 25. Seen, okay. So, discussion on that. Just fixing the problem. So, made a motion, seconded by Maxine. I'm going to do oral, all in favor. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. So, now we will do, what, reports and news?
Well, the communication miscellaneous business, the only reason I want to do that is we have the police chief meeting greet on Thursday at 6:00 PM at the public library, the other library. We have three candidates that the police committee has brought forward to the public. There'll be time just to kind of mingle, ask some questions, and then if you guys have any questions, you can give them to me, and then I'll ask. you can give them to me, and then I'll ask them, and we can kind of just more, more, more informal conversation for you all, just to be able to provide feedback to the police committee.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'll comment on that, because I think, Michelle, you actually mentioned something about that. There, there might be some wrong information out there about what's going on with the police chief interim and how that process worked. And I'm not fully aware of all the details, right, but we did default to Molly being the sergeant of the department to serve as interim chief. That would have required her to move to day shifts instead of evening shifts, because that's just a requirement of being the interim chief. That was declined relative to that, so we moved to the next highest member of the force, which was Cody. And he did also make some adjustments to the things. The chief position itself is actually not part of the union, so that actually also complicates matters a little bit, so. So as it stands right now, Cody's our interim chief, but he's also, like, not part of the union at the moment, which if, if he doesn't get the promotion, he'll move back to the union. There's not a, and I, I'd also stress too, that there's two different things going on at the same time, right? One is the appointment of an interim chief, and the other is, is hiring a new chief, right? Those two things are, they're, they happen at the same time, but they're separate activities. The other part of that, that I want to stress, and I just lost my thought process for a moment, but was that, bear with me just a second here. It's my train of thought, sorry, this microphone's messing me up. But the the, the process of, of hiring a new chief, we're only able to hire people that apply for the role, right? There, the other current members of the force actually didn't apply for the role, so it wasn't as though we passed over candidates. I don't know that we discouraged or encouraged anybody to apply for the role. Everybody was available to apply for it, that just didn't happen, so. Again, I'm very happy with our officers. I think they do a great job, so I just, I don't want it to, to look as if certainly the board or the police committee, either one of those entities headed in for one or, or another relative to that process. It just worked out the way that it did. There were, I think, five total candidates, I think, that we received applications for the role, the committee. And I actually was part of the interview process, and we whittled it down to three. On Thursday, as Gabe mentioned, there's gonna be another round of interviews that are gonna be conducted by Gabe, multiple, a couple of police chiefs, the chief of EMS, the chief of the fire department, to weigh in on that. They're gonna provide feedback after that to the committee to basically further along that process, so it, it. Could it have been more transparent? Sure, sure it could have, but I think there's also, there's also a danger in today's day and age, as we all probably know, that social media explodes and we don't have the resources, and I try not to stay off, I try to, I try to stay off, excuse me, of social media as much as I can, just because I could go down a rabbit hole every day on things. But that's just to, to lay a little bit of foundation as to what's going on, but I don't, I, I know Cody's a candidate, I'm not, I haven't made up my mind one way or another. I think that that's the way we should be approaching it, is to, to really do a solid interview process to find the best candidate for Belleville that may or may not be somebody that's currently on the force. It just is the way that it works, and for those of you who probably don't know, I actually grew up in Baraboo, and my dad was the captain of the police department for 29 years, so I fully respect the officers. He actually got, rose to interim chief for a period of time, didn't get the role, and stayed on as captain for, for years after that, so. I, I, I understand the way that mechanism works, so, anyway, but just wanted to share that as well. Okay, so other, and another, other news, obviously, we've got UFO days coming up at the end of the week, so. There's that. Obviously, tonight, we've got the big thing with the depot, and I did want to make a couple of comments before I hand it over to our consultants relative to the depot. I'm very excited about this process. I think we've been trying to be as, as transparent as we could be, which is why we're having this meeting tonight and asking for input from the public relative to this whole process. One thing I will say is that I'm gonna try to say this carefully, and maybe I'll, I'll frame it up this way, because I'm an analogy guy, so. I'm sure many of you in the audience have put in an offer for a house before, right, or you've purchased a house, right? And you may not have won when you put in an offer for the house, because the, the things you were willing to promise relative to the purchase price, or the date of occupancy, or the contingencies that you wanted from the seller weren't necessarily in alignment with what the buyer or what the seller was looking for relative to that property. That comes into play probably tenfold relative to this type of a transaction, because we're literally talking about a piece of property that the village owns, but I would say it's, it's a foundational piece of property for Belleville, right? We're literally talking about the iconic depot that sits right downtown, and everybody drives past it every day when they go through downtown, right? It's a, it's a, it's a part of the personality of Belleville. So, so it's very important that the board considers all aspects of whatever offer we get to make sure that it fits in line with what we're trying to do from a growth perspective. If it's in line from a development perspective, it makes sense from a generating revenue standpoint, and ultimately that it stays historical, right? That's a, that's a big element of all this. So there were a bunch of criteria that we put in the RFP when we accepted bids relative to this. But the other part of that puzzle is that there is information that the board gets for transactions like this, that we unfortunately can't share with the public, right? We aren't gonna be advertising the purchase price, or the two different offers to the public, because that wouldn't be fair to the, to the buyers and how they put in their bids, right? We will do it once the deal is done, right, or once we get to the closing end of that, that process, but we just don't have the ability to include that level of transparency. That's a very common thing at, in government transactions, just the way that it works, because it can't be, like, if, if we put it out there, we would never sell the building, because we might get other officer, offers that are better, or whatever, and people are gonna, to, to dispute that, so. I think part of this process, and I think the essence of it, and is that, you know, I know we've got two very attractive bids, or two bids that are attractive in different ways. And I'm, I'm hoping that residents will understand whatever decision is made, and I haven't made up a decision, I don't know if there's anybody on the board that's made a decision relative to how they plan to move forward. But whatever decision is made, I hope the residents understand that we're trying to keep everybody's best interest in mind relative to what that looks like, which is gonna be integrating the feedback that we get tonight. It's gonna be integrating the presentations that we get from the, from the buyers tonight, and all of that process into deciding the, the final decision, which is what is going to happen with the depot, right, and how we decide to move forward, and I hope that people will absorb that, and whatever the outcome is, that they provide business to those entities, whoever it is, right? If it's, if it's, you know, one group, it's, hey, that's a really great idea. Or the other group is like, hey, maybe that wasn't my favorite idea out of the two. There might be aspects that I didn't think about when, when that was being considered, but that, but that we give them our business and basically frequent those establishments, because that's literally how we build up and, and welcome people into Belleville. So that's kind of all I have to say about that. I, I don't, I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't have a decision made. I just want people to understand. This isn't an easy decision for anybody up here either. This isn't, there's certainly nothing that's gonna be greasing the skids relative to me becoming more wealthy because of any of that stuff, or anybody else on the board. Like, I don't do this for money, and it certainly isn't paying the bills, so it's just the way that it works, right? So I think, I just hope everybody understands that. With that, we are gonna move to, back to item B. Discuss and consider the Village Depot presentation. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Craig and Emily.
Okay, is this working? No, it is, there we go, okay. All right, so, good evening. Thanks, everyone, for being here. I'm Emily Mail. I'm with Broadwing Advisors. We're a local firm that specializes in strategic real estate consulting. I'm gonna quickly introduce the process that led us to tonight. And then my colleague Craig is gonna walk through the procedures for tonight's presentations. It's worth noting that no decision regarding the sale of the depot is gonna be made tonight. However, your feedback and engagement is an important part of this process. We are excited for you to hear details from the projects from both groups. And we are equally excited for the village, because both the proposals are really well done, and offer exciting future opportunities for the community. Each team has responded to a request for proposal that required they present their concept through the lens of three stated goals. Those three stated goals were pulled directly from the village comprehensive plan. Those three goals are community activation, historic preservation, and economic development. Additionally, the request for proposal listed eight criteria by which the proposals will be evaluated. The first is expertise, experience, and financial capacity. The second is quality of proposed use. The third is economic feasibility. The fourth, alignment with the Village of Belleville's stated goals. Fifth, historic preservation plan, including capacity and experience. Six is the value of estimated future tax base. Seven, purchase price, financing terms, and conditions for the purchase of the property. And the eight is feasibility of the property for the project. I'm gonna hand it over.
So, again, my name is Craig Stanley. The Village Board of Trustees have asked us to moderate the presentations and conversations tonight. The goal of the presentations for the meeting is to allow the public to see the concepts, the potential first, future use of the depot, and allow public feedback on these concepts. From a process part, here's the process we, we intend to follow. Each team will present their proposals based on the following: the introductions and backgrounds of the team, the use and operation plans of the property, and the design concepts of the depot and the site. We're intending to have 15 minutes per presentation. During the presentation, the other team will be out of the room just out of respect for each party. As you listen to the presentations, if you have clarifying questions regarding a presentation, we ask you to write those down. We're gonna hand out some papers to write those down. We want to try and use everybody's time efficiently tonight. Following the protest, presentations, we're gonna collect those questions. Our plan is to ask those questions on your behalf. Please note that each of the questions will be asked of both teams, unless they're very specific, in order to address the, the questions regarding the presentations. Following, excuse me. Following the Q and A, we'll have formal time for public comment. We estimate about 45 minutes. This process will follow a typical three-minute per person per comment. We also understand that some people may not feel comfortable formally speaking, and you're more than happy to fill out a comment sheet that will be considered by the board as well. Please note, no negotiation details or financial discussions will be addressed in the public session tonight. These discussions, as I think Jeff outlined, are typically required in a public process that would be done by the board and done in closed session. That said, the board welcomes financial feedback, suggestions, and concerns you have as a community. And if you want the board to consider any items relative to that, feel free to outline them either written or in your public feedback. On behalf of the Village Board and our, and our team, we so appreciate the cooperation, the public engagement you guys are making. We appreciate your positive feedback and allowing us to follow this process. Overall, Emily and I are really excited for Belleville and the opportunity for the future of the depot. And I'm gonna now introduce, let's see, we decided you guys are going first, you guys. I'll, I will let the teams introduce themselves. They have a, I think, a deck that they're gonna present to the, to everybody, and then we'll do a switcheroo and go from there. And if, when we're collecting questions, there's gonna be a natural break for people to just relax for a minute.
Rex, hello. Welcome, or I guess you guys are here already before we got here, so. Just wanted to say, we're really excited to present this opportunity here. I hope you keep an open mind to us. I know myself and Catherine don't live in the city limits. I'm a, I live in Pittsburgh. Don't hold that against me, but, but yeah, we're really excited about this opportunity here, and as we started out, I wanted to make sure that we started with who we are and how we got here. So if you're wondering who, myself and this is Catherine, who we are and why are we here today, we just wanted to make sure that you got some information on that, and we are able to talk about our, our presentation, so. To start, how did we get here? So I was in so these so this is me and Catherine here. So me and Catherine actually met about seven months. Myself, I was in hotel business for 25 years. I don't know if you know Marcus Corporation, they own hotels, resorts, and movie rooms. I worked with them for 25 years. I went all over the country, eight different properties for them, helping to develop hotels. My last position was the general manager for Hilton Madison and other chains down in Madison. From there, I, I actually just got, I really wanted to get into real estate. I really enjoyed near my microphone, am I, I'm sorry. Can, can you guys hear right? I do tend to project pretty, pretty loud anyways. But, but yeah, so we, actually, it was myself and a gentleman named Scott Wheaton that you'll, you'll see a little bit later today. We just started looking at historical property everywhere. We were cruising around, all around Wisconsin. We saw this, the train depot, and thought it was, was amazing. I built a pretty good relationship with Scott and Naomi. Naomi is the CEO of Bachman. And they invited me to a Wisconsin Trust Dinner. It's a historical preservation dinner in, in Madison, and that's where I ran into Catherine. Wherever she went. So Catherine and I got, got a chance to meet each other. We started meeting weekly for coffee, and it was just it was me pulling up, you know, the latest old building that I've looked at, and the two of us just really started connecting really well. She compliments me better than anybody else, so I, I have a tendency to look at people, numbers, operations. Those are some of the, the things that I feel comfortable with. I've just recently got into real estate, so that's another area that I feel comfortable with. When it comes to design, construction, line construction and architecture, she's gonna be more the X. When it comes to the operations of the facility, that'll be more mine. So I'm getting a little off topic. Okay, so we got a, we got a code word. She's supposed to clap twice if I start rambling. So we'll, we'll, I'll go ahead and kick it over to you.
Derek Stain, we joined four we met at a dinner for Madison Trust for Historic Preservation, we were sitting with Bachman as well. So that's kind of how this all came together. I, my last held position is Derek Stain at the hospitality end. I've been in architect practice. I, I moved back to Madison about three years ago, but my last held position was I ran big hospital campus renovation project. Very, a lot of stakeholders and over a long period. It was a lot of fun. Rest of our team, we have we have Jen and Dawn. So next on our team, we have Dawn and, we have Donna Corley. She's the Architect of Record. And specifically, specifically is specializing in Den. den. Your kind of seniorship, den is basically that it would be a really good
When it comes to then is, you'll see her on the, on the other table.
And then moving into our general contractor, we have Bachman, we have Bachman Construction. We've got Naomi Croft here, who is the CEO of Bachman, as well as Scott, who's the VP and runs operation. Moving into the relevant team experience, we're going to have Naomi talk about some of the projects that they've done together.
Hi, everybody. I'm Naomi Croft, CEO at Bachman Construction. Recently transitioned that role from my father. I am a third generation Bachman. We're actually celebrating 70 years in business as of this month. So I am also Senior Project Manager and our Historical Restoration Specialist. I've done several projects for properties on the National Historic Register. We're going to talk about Garber. We're going to talk about Seven Acre Dairy. I'm endeavoring on this for Nuglaris Hotel right now. The depot, the thing, the depot has gone for it right now is that it's already on the National Historic Register. It has already been declared a national treasure. So we're ahead of the game already. But back in 2017, I was general contractor at the Garber Feed Mill. And Garber is similar to the depot in terms of the construction, masonry building, very similar type of brick, very similar in terms of the wear and tear and the deterioration that you've been experiencing at the depot. So these are some of the before pictures. You can see the deterioration maybe. The big thing that was happening there that is happening at the depot is every season you go through a freeze thaw. Any moisture that's inside of those brick walls just explodes the walls further. It pops out bricks and it just brings down those walls. Now you all replaced the roof a couple of years back, so that's helped. But all of the masonry facade is also cracked and deteriorating and moisture is getting in there. And on the west side of the depot, you can see how that whole side is way more deteriorated than the other. Anyways, we're going to have to endeavor to fix the depot much like we had to do at Garber. We're going to have to touch point and replace all of that brick. Garber was cream, or it was Chicago pink brick. You all have Cream City out of St. Louis instead of, out of Chicago, but very kind of soft, delicate brick. And so we're going to have to match all that. That'll be part of the work that we do, similar to what we did at Garber. We're going to have to do stabilizations, replace the foundation. But in terms of the effort, the type of approvals that we're going to have to go through, matching all the mortar, matching all the brick, making sure that we're doing everything up to stuff with the Secretary of the Interior Standards. Same exact thing as Garber. I live about a quarter mile away from Garber Feed Mill. There every day. It is a wonderful vibrant hub of economic activity just down the street from me. So I think you'll see something similar if we get to do the depot. Yeah, that's the after picture. Lovely event space. People come in and go on all the time. I'm trying to think if there's anything else to say about Garber. We, we've, oh, yeah, I mean, Madison Historic Trust awarded that one. Project of the year. We've got masonry, excellent award from the Wisconsin Masonry Chapter. We got a design award. It was, I mean, it was a, you know, pet project that, it was a building that sat empty for 30 years. You know, the city of Madison also did not know what to do with it because it's just such a big thing. And so it was also a public-private partnership where the property didn't actually change hands. It's on a 100-year lease situation with Madison. But similar thing where it was the restoration, the new life was breathed into this building because of partnering with the city of Madison so that that private holder could then create the business. And the, the basically economic drivers that they needed to turn it into a new place, give it another hopefully 25 years of life. So that was Garber. And then just down the road, we have Seven Acre Dairy. So I was a general contractor on that one two years ago. Totally different animal. It was built same time, late 1890s. But it was an industrial food processing space for dairy. And milk from all over the county was brought there. And over the course of the 80 or so years that it was in production dairy, it had five or six additions. So it was a Frankenstein of a building. And then after it changed hands, it stopped being a dairy and it went to private ownership. All sorts of different businesses went in there. They cut it up into different boutique shops. And there were galleries in there and restaurants came and went and some apartments got put in the back. And we will just say that for about 30 years, the owners did a little bit of cowboy construction. Not all of which was permitted and not all of which was safe. So we had to do a lot of demolition and removals at Seven Acre Dairy. We're not going to hit that at the depot with it, which is great. Kind of what you see is what you get there, except for that little part that the DNR built their offices in. But that should come out relatively easily. But in terms of similarities that I see to Pale Eye in Belleville here, you guys are both rural towns that have the opportunity to bring money, tourism money into your cities. Seven Acre Dairy has event space. They have restaurants. They have the bar. They're right off the Sugar River. And they're right on the bike path. And that is you guys, all the way down to the T. And so while, you know, the methods of construction there were similar in that we had to follow all the rules. We had to get the state Historic Preservation Office there to look at what we were doing. We had to make sure that they approved of all of our matches to the mortar and all the brick and all the paint and all the tile and all that stuff. It was, it was just a different kind of construction, a little more complicated actually than I think what we're going to see at the depot because the depot is right there, ready to go. Like it's poised for action. And I guess the thing that I would say
I noticed that the shoebox is
Historic Preservation nerd is that don't let it go through another freeze thaw because that's the thing that's blowing out the wall. All right, I will be here for 20.
I'm going to guess 1997.
You use the microphone. Virtual can't hear you if you're not in it.
Okay. Yes, so I, we want to keep this pretty brief. We could talk about this for hours and we do have some time for question and answers as well. So looking at the use of what we're planning on using this for. We do want to maintain the, the main depot itself as a cafe. We would put some retail in there as well. The retail would look at having or supplying items for the bike trail. So some, some easy things for bike trail goers. Train themed items. Obviously, we are looking to really build this brand, the yard. So we would, we'd probably have some apparel in there. And then we would also have some sundries, some simple upscale items for, for the community to take advantage of. We also would have event space. So inside, we want this to be multifunctional events. So you could move the chairs and then be able to host events inside the depot. We were hoping that, you know, if the weather was bad, we need to move a farmer's market indoors. You have a location for that. The other portion of this is the big, outside of the main depot itself, we really wanted to create a container park. So the thoughts of the container park is to have five units, container units, and a flatbed unit spread across the grounds. The flatbed unit would be utilized as a stage for I think I'm getting into, I'm already going into too far. So picnic area. We also have a train museum, a playground. We also, next slide will be on tourism. So I'm going to kick that back to Catherine. But we've had some discussions with the Wisconsin Department of Tourism, talking about some of the wayfinding for the facility. Looking at that PB to Highway 69. Seems like that causes everybody just to not go downtown. And we saw that on some of the social media and I've already reached out and started building up a relationship with the Wisconsin Department of Tourism and Drew there. So, oh, there's the clap.
We're, we're getting our communication down. So we wanted to talk about how the tourism in Wisconsin is growing at a really, really great rate. And Belleville, as I'm sure we all know, is poised to capture a lot of it throughout all seasons. The Badger State, the Badger State Trail is huge for both snowmobiling and summer bikes, summer biking trips. You know, we've kind of been talking about how in the summer, you know, this building almost programs itself, you know? It's like, it's going to be hard to not want to be there in the summer in the way you kind of think about it. And then in the winter, I really want one of these containers to have grilled cheese and tomato soup and maybe hot toddies in the evening is sort of my vision for it all. But I think that the building is very well poised to, to serve the community throughout. Here's just a little bit of information. 2023 was like a banner year for tourism in Wisconsin. And so much of it is happening around Madison, you know, Epic, UW, Ironman, all the things that happen around Madison push so much traffic.
For site activation, we would be looking at doing a large social media blitz. Actually, if you would like, if you're ever interested in any of these details that we're covering right now, Catherine did create a website. It's www.bellvilleyards.com. I believe this presentation is on there as well as all the links to the village. So in addition to the website, we also would be looking to put together a very robust marketing campaign. We would want to get out and engage with local businesses as well as engage with various historical societies in the surrounding areas and communities. These are individuals that are really going to want to enjoy this beautiful property. We would look at seasonal programming and then kind of like Catherine was saying, Madison does have large citywide events. There's a lot of them. They cause compression in the city and it pushes out to the to the outskirts. So those are times sometimes you will see more activity in Belleville or, or Verona. And whether that's a Badger game, it's Ironman, if it's, you know, the World Dairy Expo. There's certain things that create compression in the city and cause business and, and opportunities to come out. So we want to make sure and take full advantage of that. And then lastly, we do want to have a grand opening event. So in here clap, I think I'm good right now, but I think if you want to go to the next slide here. Oh, these are more some of the design. I think that, that
So next we're going to move into the historic preservation, which, you know, is listing the comprehensive plan. We, we thank you. Um, we've noted that historic preservation of the building is of the utmost importance. And, and kind of married to that, we've really been hearing that the character of this building and maintaining the character of that, of this building is also of the utmost importance. And it really can't be understated enough that those two things are completely tied together. You know, the ability to sort of maintain the rich character of these old buildings and allow it to sort of exist within the modern offerings of this building is in the details. It is no doubt about it in the details. It's not in, you know, I mean, there's like, you know, the shape of the roof and then, and these giant floors. But, you know, I put this picture up here from Seven Acres Dairy. You can see, right, like you go stay in that room and what you remember is that window, right? That's the charm of the building and it's really in the details. And, and it's and so the historic preservation of it, as we already talked about, this is already, this building's already listed in the National Register of Historic Places. It was done in 2016. My understanding is thanks very much to some passionate Belleville residents for saving that. The next step is to dive straight into design and that's really when all that meaty detail really comes out. You know, all those wonderful parts and we, we figure out what we can sell, what, what we can keep in that building and what we can make, what we can allow to shine based on the new program that goes in there and the new, the new layout that goes in. After design, so the next step is to jump right into, excuse me, next step is to jump deep into design. After we get to design development, which is a pretty normal milestone of completion with our design team, which is comprised of me, Dawn Bachman, and a few other specialists that we'd like to bring in to, to kind of manage the historic aspect of it. Then it gets submitted for both state and federal reviewers. During that time, there's a little bit of downtime for us, just as it goes into review. Not that downtime implies it's mellow. There's just other things to be doing beyond the design of the building. Here's a little flavor of sort of the depot design. You know, we have a lot of research to do. I've been, can't wait to get that building scanned just so you get some like real, real drawings. But this is a little bit of the look and feel about where the building is headed. You know, of course, not only do we intend to, but we are legally required to keep all of that gorgeous brick exactly as it is. We want to have a really, not to be too generic, but cozy, you know, it wants to be very, very cozy in it. Those type of natural materials lend itself to that kind of cozy, cozy feeling where you want to stay and hang out for a while. So you're going to see a lot of exposed, a lot of exposed brick, definitely exposed trusses from the roof above. The color palettes, we want to keep really muted. Benjamin Moore has the most delicious historical color palettes you could ask for. So feel free to go shopping on there for some eye candy. And, you know, everything down to the, the light fixtures and the handrails goes, goes through deep review, both with the state and federal agencies, as well as the historic specialists that we bring on board. A very key element of our design is to keep the big, heavy systems out of this building. This is a really, really, really old building and those types of systems are, they're stressful to buildings. And there's really no other way to say it. The equivalent of, you know, surgery or other, you know, they're, they're invasive to a building. And so a big part of our strategy of putting the larger food offerings in the box, in the shipping container park outside is to allow the building to be a comfortable place for seating. You know, we have our offerings kind of nicely divided between things that generate, things that are revenue generating and things that are not. You know, the building very largely wants to be a comfortable place for people to sit, have some historical components, a lot of train, a lot of train historical elements, memorabilia and things like that. And all the heavier duty, all the heavier duty functions will be outside. The parcel is nearly an acre. It almost seems silly to not take advantage of the whole thing in order to really just allow the full site to flex. Leaving the building open for events, flexibility and community. Another key element to this design is leaving this building very open. We heard from Gar, from Garber Feed Mill through the pandemic, of course, everything changed and a lot of their offerings, you know, they just didn't have the same ways to make money as they thought they were going to. And the way that building was set up to allow for that flexibility, you know, they, they say in that article we referenced, they, it almost, the way it was designed and the flexibility it allowed sort of allowed them to find a new footing in this sort of like new economy that came out that, that they were presented with. And so I think highlighting flexibility is a really important thing to do to this building because you don't know what's going to come next, you know? And you kind of just want to leave it to be with you.
This is it. We're, this is the last slide. We made it. We wanted to kind of go through, just give you a little bit, see the visual, where these pieces are that I was talking about before.
Sorry, Gabe. So we, I kind of went through some of these things that are going to be part of the proposal. So we have it on here as well for the site plan. And I guess the question and answer session would probably be best for, if you're looking for specifics on any individual part of these. We could continue to talk about this for hours. I just want to say thank you for, I think, the last slide. I just want to say thank you for giving us this opportunity and totally understand there's another amazing team that's going to be putting together a proposal to you. We just want to, want the option and, or the opportunity to really show you what we can do. And we want the best for Belleville. We are excited to, to join and, and work with you. Is there anything else you want to wrap up with Catherine? Thank you so much for, for your time today. And yeah, if there are questions, please save them for the question and answer session. We would love to answer it.
Thank you.
Check, check. Check one.
Thank you all. Here's the second team.
Check one. Thank you so much to all of our friends, neighbors, family who are attending tonight to help decide what's best for our Belleville train. My name is Casey Funse and I am representing our team as the presenter tonight. We would like to thank the village board for this opportunity publicly present tonight. We've been waiting for this opportunity for a long time. We met with the village administrator multiple times last fall and asked them on February thirteenth to put us on the agenda. Now, we have fifteen minutes to present lifetimes for our dreams. I want you guys to close your eyes and imagine it's a few years from now. And it's a beautiful Saturday afternoon in Belleville and you're hosting your beloved cousin Katie from out of town. You take a walk from wherever you are in town down to our Belleville. Cross into Library Park. You pass a fountain my great grandmother Clara rebuilt. Fountain stands there because she remembered seeing it first time she came to Belleville as a child on a horse and buggy. You continue diagonally past our beautiful old library and immediately begin to feel the energy of our community as you cross Pearl Street to our Belleville. The walk up the platform ramp from the west side of the building leads you into a wide open entertainment space filled with tables of families and friends. Year-round food and beverage services provided by our anchor tenant, the Belleville Depot Project. But you decide that you're gonna take Katie out to see the newly rehabilitated Stewart Tunnel on a pair of bikes that you can rent right on the property. You walk outside and discuss whether you should use a tandem bike or a pair of e-bikes. The e-bikes will get you to Stewart Tunnel and back faster. So you choose that because you really want Katie to hear this local band that will be playing at three P M. on the The caboose stage is a replica train that sits at the southwest corner of the property that faces back towards Library Park. The caboose and the depot are separated by our outdoor patio space that runs along the west end of the property along the bike path. This space, this patio space can host the farmer's market, beanbag tournaments, and these weekend festivities that draw so many people to our area. It was this dream turning our Belleville Depot into a gathering place that magnified our team. Story of our coalescence started fourteen months ago when I heard a rumor that the depot had been purchased. And this immediately sparked my curiosity. I had toured the depot in twenty twenty-one with my wife Lena with the thought of rehabilitation. I knew that Rick Francois could verify this information that I had heard. Rick, who grew up in Belleville, as a fourth generation Bellevillion, had been deeply impacted when the original Belleville Mill was torn down in nineteen seventies. Despite only being in high school at the time, Rick knew the value of the iconic building that helped found Belleville. So when similar discussions regarding the Belleville Train Depot began more than twenty years ago, Rick decided to get involved. He helped establish our Belleville Train Depot as a national historic landmark through his work with the Economic Development Committee and the Community Development Authority. Rick is semi-retired from the retail automotive and convenience store industry with a deep rooted connection to Belleville. He is dedicated to seeing the community thrive and grow. His years of experience and passion for the area make him a valuable asset to local initiatives. And Rick will be a primary investor and continue his work as a community liaison for our team. Within days of me hearing this, Rick and I sat down and talked about the depot, the work that he helped see completed through the years. And during that conversation, Rick told me that I needed to meet Nick. Nick is the founder and owner of Seven Acre Dairy in Paoli. Nick is an award, has an award-winning thirty-year career in hospitality and the food and beverage industry, holding positions from bussler, production line worker, all the way to chief executive officer and everything in between. Nick spent twenty of these years overseeing small and large-scale developments in rural communities in Alaska and Illinois and in Wisconsin. Most of these projects use creative financing, including historic tax credits to maximize economic and social benefit for the local communities. Currently as the owner of Seven Acre Dairy, the Seven Acre Dairy Company, which is twice named the best boutique hotel by Madison Magazine, and he is currently working as the development manager of the New Glarus Hotel redevelopment and restoration in New Glarus. Nick will serve as our project consultant on this project. Nick's been instrumental in helping our team put a plan together that is good for Belleville and economically viable. As Nick and I sat along the river at the beautiful Seven Acre Dairy thirteen months ago in Paoli, he told me about his dream triangulating Belleville, New Glarus, and Paoli as an outdoor and recreational lover's destination. Stories that he shared that afternoon because people were coming from far and wide to visit this place, this space. We discussed a lot of ideas that afternoon about the potential of the depot and Nick's experience in working on projects of this magnitude. As our conversation wound down, Nick told me I needed to talk to Kelly Hickman. Kelly purchases home in Belleville over a decade ago. Belleville is very similar to the small town where Kelly grew up. He was drawn to this community by the size and history, outdoor opportunities like the Sugar River, Badger State Trail, and the neighboring wildlife areas. The depot, along with the other historic buildings throughout downtown Belleville, immediately drew Kelly's eye on the ride. With a thirty-five-year history in the trades and as a licensed general contractor, ideas started developing. Kelly is the owner of multiple small businesses, including Sugar River Outfitters, Magnolia Properties, and HHS General Contracting here. Kelly has been actively working on the depot project for roughly two years. Kelly is the lead for our Belleville Depot project and has been the driving force behind our use concept, our community engagement. And he will serve as the co-general contractor along with National Construction. It's Kelly's decades of experience in construction that connected our team with Jeff Grundle and Bernie Wang, who's here from National Construction tonight. This name seems familiar. National Construction built the police station in twenty nineteen and the library in twenty twenty, both here in Belleville. National Construction has experience in projects with historical relevance, just like the depot. They completed the Iowa County Courthouse Edition, which is the oldest courthouse in the state of Wisconsin. Kelly started his pursuit of the depot with basic historical research, use concept, and feasibility plans. When he felt there was a realistic opportunity and a need in the community, he reached out to the village to take the next steps. Kelly has been engaging the community at large. This included hosting two informational presentations last spring that were attended by over a hundred residents. If I could have a show of hands to anybody that attended one of those meetings, thank you very much. He sincerely hopes that your voices are reflected in what we are presenting today. And I can tell you, our team would not be standing here tonight without Kelly taking the reins for this project. By early October of twenty twenty-three, Nick, Kelly, and myself met to discuss the vision we all shared for the depot. Kelly began to share the feedback from the conversations that he had with his customers and friends that were new to Belleville. And that feedback being that Belleville was missing family-friendly destination that could serve as a gathering place for our community. Kelly sensed that the time to move was present. As long as we could put together a team of like-minded, deeply rooted individuals from this community that could deliver. When I left our meeting that October afternoon, the thoughts swirled around my head and one specific individual kept surfacing. Paul Nemec, Mr. Belleville. Paul is one of my closest friends and his wife Amanda once shared with us that Paul had a dream of opening a little bike shop. As a graduate of Belleville High School and another lifelong resident, Paul's expertise in media and promotion and marketing provide the perfect energy to drive people and events to our train depot and help establish this as the Mecca. Paul is the principal owner of Peak Creative, an award-winning marketing and media company that has been recognized by the Wisconsin Broadcasting Association and the American Advertising Federation. He's also an Eagle Scout. Paul will serve as a primary investor to our depot project and help work our, help work to draw entertainment to our Belleville. Again, my name is Casey. And I believe that every decision in my life has led me to this moment. Belleville is my home. My zip code has been five three five oh eight for forty of my forty-six years. My parents' home and the house I was raised in borders the forgotten train rails in the current bike path. I grew up building forts along either ditch shouldering the tracks. I used to walk with Nick and Ellie Hodle every day after school down this hill directly to the train depot. We would each try to balance beam walk along the rails from the depot to their family farm just a quarter mile north. One of my core memories was in July nineteen eighty-three, a five-year-old boy taking a very special train ride on the one-on-one flyer traveled from Monroe through Stewart Tunnel to our Belleville Train Depot. This special trip was made along the former Illinois Central Line commemorating the hundred and first birthday of Monroe. It was like I was experiencing something from a history book and it still resonates with me today. Years later, I barely graduated from Belleville High School and then put myself through college. I married the love of my life and we have raised two children in this community. We serve as the presidents of Sugar River Soccer Club. We volunteer for more things than I can recount and we have done all of this because we love our community. When I am not publicly pandering for support from my community, I run a successful Bobcat Enterprise in Wisconsin and Illinois. I have been a co-owner of a commercial property in Verona for the last nine years and I'm ready to commit the rest of my life to ensuring that our Belleville Depot becomes everything that I have painted in your imaginations just moments. So now we've shared a snapshot of our vision, who we are, how we coalesced, now our team is excited to tell you how we do this. Our team is focused on delivering a completed depot within two years or less of being awarded this project. After three to four months of discovery and planning, we'll meet with the village and the historical authorities, including Jen Davel, who's here tonight from Heritage Consulting. Jen has previously worked with the Wisconsin State Historic Preservation Office, as well as overseeing the preservation of the Mineral Point Opera House. Once we have completed our approved plan, construction begins. We have studied the historical significance of the train depot and we will adhere to the highest standards set forth by the Department of Interior's National Historic Landmarks Guidelines for renovation. We understand that the standards are being applied to specific rehabilitation and renovation projects in a reasonable manner, taking into account consideration, economic and technical feasibility. Plan to use as many local contractors as possible through the breadth of this project and capitalize on our numerous relationships within the community to create local job opportunities. Our team has the financial capabilities to complete this project to its entirety. We are planning to seek additional investment from the community at large because this is our thing. We will build a community space as an economic catalyst to strengthen and grow the community through the historic reservation, renovations, excuse me, of our training. This project will enhance local amenities like the Badger State Trail, Library Park, and the beautiful Sugar River. Most importantly, we believe that our train depot will serve as the anchor property for the east end of downtown. We believe that this project serves the same catalyst the original Illinois Central Railroad and Train Depot provided helped Belleville flourish back in eighteen. Belleville began to quickly grow just four years after the depot and the railroad were completed in our town. Incorporated four years after their The core space of our Belleville Depot is intended to be a year-round community hub for recreation, events, dining, and gathering. Our concept includes the preservation and restoration of prevalent architecture, historical and culturally significant features, while also making the property compatible for continued use other than its original. Site improvements will include parking, green space, outdoor event space, additional small structures to support our seasonal tenants and trail access. Building improvements will include a modern ADA compliant bathroom addition on the south end of the Belleville. Modern infrastructure, indoor event space with full A V. support, and a commercial kitchen with food and beverage service, with food and beverage service area. The space will have family-focused food and beverage service year-round. That food and beverage provider will serve as the anchor tenant and bring real economic viability to our plan. Seasonally, the property will also host additional tenants that focus on food and recreation. Currently, our project team anticipates a bike rental company run by Paul Nemec and myself, paddling rental service provided by Kelly Hickman's Sugar River Outfitters, and a seasonal ice cream stand run by Seven Acre Dairy. A redeveloped train depot will also house special events throughout the year, including local bands, music festivals, recreational competitions, and much more. We plan to be an event space for local weddings, graduation parties, other community activities that will require a large gathering. In closing, our Belleville Depot project will take a tremendous stride towards helping Belleville achieve its goals related to the long-term comprehensive plan put together by current board and past village boards. As we have laid out, our project is quite flexible in nature while targeting our goal of creating destination wealth. We thank you for your time and attention this evening. We welcome you to be a part of this once-in-a-lifetime transformation. Thank you.
Last like a couple of weeks ago, we had one that was like thirteen minutes long.
Can you all hear me? All right. So there were two questions that were more aimed to the village than for the presenters. The first question had to do with liquor licenses. The village right now is in need of one. We are about eight residents away from a new full liquor license, which is determined by the DOR or the DOA, the Department of Administration, which is based on our annual census review. We are aways from that because they just created it about a couple of weeks ago and now we are about a year from getting a new liquor.
Describe the liquor licenses because there's, there's. Well, that's fine. I think it's important to clarify.
Okay, just to clarify, for, there are two types of liquor licenses, a Class A and a Class B. Class A would be your quick trips and stuff, your take-home takeaway Class A. Class B is your restaurants, you're, you're drinking it there. There are three kinds, there are two kinds of Class Bs, then we divide that in half. There's Class B beer. Class B beer is unlimited. We can, we can issue as many of those as we desire as a village. A Class B liquor is based on your population. And so based from the nineteen ninety-seven population and then for every five hundred extra over that you get a reserve, it's called a reserve license, but it issues basically similar to the, to the thing. And as Gabe mentioned, we have six current Class B liquor licenses and within the next year we'll have a seventh. There's also a Class C wine, which we are allowed to issue and that's an unlimited liquor license. So potentially even if we do not have a, a Class B liquor available and as with Johnny is at the moment, you can have a Class B beer and a Class C wine and still provide a wide variety of beverage options. There is a way to take those, those reserved Class B liquors and like purchase one from another municipality within the same county. So for us, that would be Dane and Green. But that's based on if someone has one available. Also, that municipality is allowed to set the purchase price. So if they tell you they, you can only have that for ten million dollars, then that's literally the price. And there would be no reason in this economy when those are in high demand that you wouldn't raise the price so that'd be very high. So there's a lot of interest season. You're always welcome to come talk liquor with me at the Clark's.
She'll be happy to do it. And then I think the other one is actually for group one, but are you familiar with the update to the Stewart Tunnel? Just for an update on the village's end, this is not a village project. This is a state project. It was put into the state budget. State budget is two years in length, so their projects are two years. State can take as long as they want to get the project done, but it is in this budget supply process. So I'm assuming they'll probably let me know spring, but their timeline. But I don't know if you want that aim for the group one or not, but that is the process at least on the village.
So first a couple logistical questions that was part of the process that we did when we got engaged. There were a couple of questions. One was relative to the deadline and the, and the extension of the proposed time. The second was relative to any conversations that we had for the board from the presenters. When we were engaged, we had asked and outlined to the village board that we were going to try and set a deadline, but I'm sorry, my name is Craig Stanley. I'm the founding principal of Broadwing Industries. We're the consultant hired by the village to run this process. Anyways, the process. We in real estate, sometimes in, when you're selling a house or you're doing commercial real estate, it doesn't always happen linearly, linear, linear, and we wouldn't be enjoying our jobs to, to look at proposals. We still are getting interest in the property from other parties and we wouldn't be doing our jobs to present those opportunities to, to, to the village and to the board. So not every, as much as we tried to get and promoted for ten weeks, this to the community through various sources. Sometimes that word filters out slowly and so proposals did come in at different times. And I know that, that sometimes doesn't feel fair because we try and follow a process, but we also, the village want, didn't want to leave any stone unturned. Because it would not be appropriate for, and frankly, there are other ideas from other presenters that allow the village board to see how to think about this differently, how to, how to potentially mutually negotiate or make suggestions. So none of that's been decided, but I just wanted to outline those. There were two kind of general questions about process that I wanted to make sure we address on the front end. All right, this is for both teams. Why is the building important to you?
My name is Casey Funseth. I'm a sixth-generation Belleville resident. I grew up walking to the train depot every day after school, balance beam walking on the rails to my neighbor's house. I have worked hard my whole life to give back to my community. Most of that is unpaid volunteering. We look at this project not as a money-making enterprise or the first in a long list of things we want to do, all of us, residents of Belleville and taxpayers and community members. This is it. This is our project. We don't have a next. We're not checking a box. We want this to be the mecca of Belleville. Feedback that Kelly has received from new residents, and it's easy for me to say as a fifth or sixth generation resident or Bellevillian that this is important to me because of this. For new people that have chosen to live in Belleville, they need to feel like they have a place where they can become part of the community. We very much believe that this depot is waiting for that, that this depot is sitting there vacant since village purchased it, did some minor refurbishment to it, and it's sat vacant since. It's in disrepair. It needs a lot of work, the depth of which we don't really know yet. But we, we believe that we're capable, that we have the expertise to do this and stay in the community and deliver on what we've promised to you. It's not just words. This is action. This is in our blood. We're not going anywhere. That's why it's important to us.
So, you know, we have this, we, we've heard this question quite a bit and there's, there's no way for us to win by our zip code. It's just impossible. We, we were not born in Belleville. You know, I, I live in Madison. Eric's from Pittsburgh. Naomi is third generation of a local contracting firm and everybody else is from Madison, but no, we were not born in Belleville. And so we're not going to get this, we're, we're not going to get the opportunity or the pleasure to work on this building from that. But why is this building important to us? You know, I mean, this, this building tells very, very rich history of, of the greater southern Wisconsin area, of the evolution of transportation and what that does to the, the greater southern Wisconsin, northern Illinois region. That to all of us is very important and just that, you know, anybody who works on buildings wants to work on a really cool project, right? And it's just, this is just a cool project. There is really no other way, no other way to slice that. But for, for me personally, the, the potential that I see in this building is that, I mean, I've always been saying it's like, I genuinely want to make somewhere for families and I want to make somewhere for the mom. The thing that I see in this building is I, I look at this building and I think that this was with a playground outside and I think it would be the most absolutely spectacular place to take your kids between those hours of about nine-thirty in the morning and eleven-thirty. They just need to burn a lot of energy and you want to be outside and you got to eat something, but not too much. And then you go home and you have lunch and then your kids are worn out and they take a nap. And the mom wants to sit there and enjoy a cup of coffee and have a wide range to watch your kids play on a playground, you know, jumping off of this flatbed stage and kind of running around through this site. That's truthfully, you know, when I think about my like ideal, ideal user, that's sort of who, who comes to mind. But additionally, this, I think some of this, the thing that's really special about this building that we've been talking about a lot is that, you know, it used to be open to everybody in the community, right? It was train depot. And I, I think our offerings are a way to, to kind of give it back to people, sort of a volley again, you know? In my head, I really think about people with small kids, but that's just where I am in my stage of life. But I think, you know, we all think that this is just a really, really special building in a really wonderful town and and, and, I mean, that's really it again. We're, we're not, we're not going to get the honor of working on this project based on our zip code. We are extremely qualified and extremely passionate. That's, I, and, and so if this project goes on, on qualifications, if this project goes on merit, then I think that we have a really, really good I think if it goes on zip code, then we can probably.
All right, a couple of quick, just a couple of quick questions on parking. How many parking spaces are in your team? Catherine, you had, you, you did not have parking on the site.
No, we're not showing any parking right now. Again, a big part of our strategy is taking a lot of these heavy-duty systems and usually using the nearly acre-sized lot that we have so that the building itself doesn't have to house gas fan and refrigeration and a cooktop and switchgear and, you know, Naomi can definitely go into all those in more detail. But the parking, we're really looking forward to working with the village on private, private and public partnerships, whether that be leasing the spaces that come along with the old library, whether, you know, I mean, it's been a lot of conversation that the village has, there's need for more partnerships, a conversation that has been going on. And so we are a very enthusiastic partner in that and understanding we will be having to draw people in this, excuse me, have creating a draw for people to come downtown. We are very, very willing and prepared to dedicate funds to it, but where those funds go and how those funds are used, we look towards partnering with the village to understand how they can best use, serve the whole community.
Reason that there's parking. Neighbors, especially in the.
I may be making assumptions, but the farmer's market still could be occupying both, both concepts on the site. Square footage? Twenty-seven hundred square feet with a square footage. How much are you guys adding to the building? There's more. All right, go ahead. It was a, just what's the square footage? I think it was more of a, a general the building. There's a container question coming to us. Does anybody have any questions about the historic process? Jen's here. She's an expert. I want to make sure if you do, it's very, excuse me, it's a very prescriptive process that both teams will have to follow and it will, it will, it will be amazing transformation.
It doesn't. The historic tax credits are for rehabilitation of our historic buildings. That's not a restoration. So whoever is the new owner, we always say doing nothing meets the standards. So that new roof, no matter what it is, can stay if it's working.
So now these are some individual questions for each group. First for the yards, any local investors on your team? Other local being.
Craig, can we, they need to actually come and get right up to the microphone. We're having some issue with people virtually not being able to hear. Thank you.
Local as in Belleville itself? No, not at the. We've had interest. Yes, we have not secured the investors at the time. You can, perfectly fine. Yes, but we do have several interested groups in the, the region, in Dane County.
What do you mean by containers?
So if you, has anybody heard of a container park before? Well, basically, when you think about containers, the whole thought process behind this was to have five individual container units that we would allow to be more or less food trucks. I mean, that's kind of how I, I really want you to envision it, but it doesn't have to be food trucks. We would accept retail as well. When we were talking about this, we wanted to make sure that anybody from Belleville, because we knew we were does get preferential treatment for applications for those. The other thing is when you're thinking of container units, you're thinking like of a shipyard or whatever, you'd see them stacked up on boats. And our goal would be to take some of these container units and then have somebody, a fabricator come out and put some additional design to the exterior. A little bit to the exterior just to make it look more like it was a, a train car. So the thought process is all these containers go on the train or whatever, you're building a park. So the goal is to try to really play up that container park portion of it, really do minimal to the, the depot itself. We don't want to, we don't want to, because of the age of the building, we don't want to disturb that. So really playing that up and trying to make that be the compelling reason why you make that, that left turn on sixty-nine instead of staying on. We've talked about a year. I think maybe it might be a little bit longer.
Design will take several months and. Design will take several months. Um, and we have to, uh, then go through the approval process. We cannot legally start anything without the Fed's approval. Um, so I would say that would be three to four months, again, depending on how long the Fed takes to approve, and that is absolutely out of our control altogether. Beginning to end construction, I would think six to nine months, but we cannot start laying mortar when it's freezing. So that also depends on when we can start construction. If we could start right away in the spring, I would say probably by end of year. You were saying New Year's Eve bookings for that wedding reception. If all goes to plan and we get awarded quickly and we can start design right away, but that's kind of the gist of it, like a year, maybe a little longer design.
Put Jen on the spot. Is that three to, that's going to be true of both teams, but is that three to four months? You don't have to stand up. You do that. Is that a fair number? Uh, or is it closer to six? With the federal government, it depends? Got it. So it's a big unknown. Kelly, for your team, um, uh, somebody asked to expand on your connection to Seven Acre Dairy, not the ice cream park, but more the. They're asking, what is that connection?
From a business standpoint. From a business standpoint, uh, Nick and I work together, both, uh, with construction company as well as my recreation company, Sugar Bell. Hosted events together on the Seven Acre property, Eli, um, and other than that, I've done repair work on commercial properties that he's owned.
And this is for both, both teams. What percentage of space is devoted to cafe, food, beverage, retail and event space? Best guess. I know that's still a working document. Best, best guess. Let's be brief for everybody.
For ours, it's really simple. We are not looking to add a lot for the food and beverage in that the main depot building. We really want it to be as open as possible, uh, open seating. We'd have a counter. There might be a small office, um, set of bathrooms inside there. We really want to open it up as much as we can so that it acts as that, that multifunctional space. So we could host an indoor event in there if we wanted to, or if not, it goes back to.
Um, so another element, you know, the, the question is how much of the space are you going to leave open for sort of open seating? If anybody, have any, have several people been inside this building? So we know it has this beautiful pitched roof and these wonderful crutches, right? And we've seen a lot of floor plans for restaurants and gastro pubs and there was one in one of the studies that had two retail spaces, kind of left side, right side. And I think that a, a big aspect that comes to designing in this building is the roof, excuse me, is the ceiling itself, right? That big open cavity, that big open space is what makes it feel like a historic, like a historic tree. And that kind of goes back to what I was saying, right? The design, the, the, the character that this building feels and the character that, that I think community really wants to keep in that building is found in the detail. So when you talk about kitchens and retail spaces, I think something that hasn't been drawn up is the ceiling. You know, nobody looks at an R C P for this building and where are you going to put, you know, the exhaust fans that go out you know, up through these crutches, which I think are spaced ten inches apart, you know, putting all this ductwork through all of these very intricate, all this very intricate and very old construction is not only complicated, but it also takes away from character. So when we talk about leaving the space very open for events, one of the main things is leaving that space open. We're talking about putting a restroom in here and it's like, how do we even carve out that volume so that it doesn't detract from the overall volume? So just to highlight it again, leaving the space as open as possible for events, not that big. Leaving that volume open as possible is really what's going to allow the historic character that will continue to shine, whether it be a coffee shop or a wedding. You can picture that building.
Picture that building as you're standing it from the outside, you have it running north to south. Think of it as a one-third part of that building on the north end, two-thirds part of that building on the south end, if you want to call it that. That was the natural break. That is where the original wall was separated from passenger waiting area, smaller area, freight area, which is the larger bigger area. The original, uh, construction where they had lath and plaster and that kind of stuff, a lot of that, that shape. Probably not going to be a lot of opportunity to de-plaster, fix a lot of that kind of thing. In the big open space that was the freight area, you're always going to have a challenge there because it was never insulated. So if you're ever going to have an event there, that's not going to happen in the summer, or if you do have an event in the summer, you're going to have to deal with temperature. You're just not going to be able to get around being able to use that space here without doing something to modify it with the days current. That's the whole point of doing historic renovation. You're redoing a space that was used because it wasn't the originally intended for. You're doing it a certain way. Basically that's going to still respect the history of that. So you talk about the big open spaces. Yeah, that is a great big open space. You can achieve that feeling by still allowing to see through those original rafters, but bringing down the false ceiling. You're going to have to have fire suppression. You're going to have to have the requirements that hold were required. You're going to have to do those things. So there's no such thing as it's going to be wide open. You're never going to see it. You're going to have to have utilities. Part of the design is also to use what is a, a full basement, which is very, very unusual for a regular. There's a lot of structural things that have to be done to that building period. Part of those structural is going to be a little bit of structural redesign that's going to allow for that lower space to be used as storage. But it'll also allow visibility into the layers of that building, how it was built, stored through the block. To answer your question of how.
There are two questions related to financing and I just want to say in general, we're going to reserve those questions. I want to read them just so you, as a public, you acknowledge. Do you have complete financing or do you need to raise money? Both teams have outlined this. This will be discussed in detail by the board and what that structure looks like. In general, I would say both teams have very qualified teams and we're comfortable from a consulting standpoint, we're very comfortable with it. Do you need any public financing, yet still maintain full ownership is another question on financing. Both teams basically made their offers without, um, there was, there was a third team that asked for lots of public financing. That was not the city's goal. Um, and, uh, both teams basically have made their proposals without financing. But again, that will be discussed in detail by, by the board. And then the final question for the teams, before I ask this final question, um, is there any question that I didn't answer, ask appropriately of the teams? If you, please raise your hand. Emily will go and talk to you in detail, but any other question that didn't get answered, I want to make sure we're addressing them before we go into public. Okay. Yeah, please. I'll repeat it. That's great question relative to the next question, which is anchor tenant ideas and let's add programming to that. So each party talk about operational, uh, anchor tenants, what you're doing, where you are, who that looks like. I know you've talked about concepts and, and, and vision. But if you have any specificity or really, and, and let's try and let, lots of ideas, but we'll try and limit it to two to three to four without going crazy. So we respect everybody's time. Anchor tenants and, and programming.
So for anchor tenants, uh, we would be the anchor tenant. Uh, we are not looking to run away. Um, I know there's been lots of, of trying to take money from Belleville. We want to be here long here. That's our goal, myself and Catherine. Whoever investors are in it, we would own the, the, the depot itself. The, uh, the investors would be, uh, would be more for the container park. And then we again, want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity for those containers. Honestly, we know of a lot of the, the businesses locally. Um, I have been approached by some, like for instance, a pizza place. Uh, I told them, we're not even going to talk to you yet because, uh, we know that there's Johnny O's. We know that's very important and we want to make sure that we give locals the, the ability to fill those, uh, containers first and foremost. Before we start looking at, hopefully it gets to a point, uh, where there's so much, uh, buzz about this and there's so many people coming to visit that the foot traffic goes up and then you can reasonably have two pizza places or, um, yeah, or whatnot. So is there anything else you want to do? So, um, lots of programming. I mean, um, kind of drawing a blank, uh, but when we're.
For one element of the programming, uh, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a great question, right? What is it for events and what is it for kind of, uh, everyday, everyday activities here? You know, with these kind of operations, events are what's, events are more lucrative than, you know, a Wednesday morning. You know, and so I think on the kind of, I think, I think this area is, is pretty well drenched in festivals and things of that nature. So I don't really think that that's necessarily part of our programming. I think that we would like to maybe catch some of the traffic from that existing program. There's a lot that happens in library parks already, uh, and I'm kind of hoping we can, I'm, I'm kind of hoping we can just add to that, uh, both spatially and sort of labor. And I've had some really great conversations with some folks at the senior center to sort of understand what kind of programming they're, what programming they have and stand on. And so the way I think about it is like on a, on a Tuesday morning, right? A couple, you know, on a Tuesday morning, it's individuals who are maybe not working right now, either retired or there with their young kids and it's open. Get a cup of coffee at seven thirty in the morning and on a Wednesday night, you know, maybe it's a couple of friends meeting for a glass of wine and you get your tacos at whatever trailer and you decide. On a Saturday morning, I would imagine that there could be some pretty exciting things happening in the yard itself. You know, in conversation with the senior center, there's things like yoga and tai chi that I think happen both inside and outside depending on the season. Uh, and then we talk a lot about the opportunities for programming with the high school. You know, the, I'm going to joke with Derek and I, it's the same, right? It's like, you know, you rent it out for whatever event and that makes X amount of dollars, right? Well, that is rather vague. Sure. I think, um, I mean, I think that it'll be a really beautiful place. I think it'll be a really, really beautiful space to set up a downtown for something like. You know, in terms of how many of them are going to happen when they would take place.
The, the depot building that we were talking about that would house the, the retail cafe, um, that would only be, uh, serving for breakfast and lunch. Uh, lunch and dinner would be in the container park. So that would, uh, leave it, let it be available most time or special.
One question, one follow-up on that. Is your container park open twenty, like all year, even in the winter? Like, how would that work? How would food trucks work in the winter months?
So, uh, we would be leasing out these containers. So that would be up to the, the leasing, um, whoever those individuals are, uh, those companies are. We would put together a standard for the, whether that's a, a set minimum start time or opening and a minimum closing time, days a week. So we would, we would, uh, adjust based off of that.
I get, hold on. I'm, actually I'm a little more interested than, you know, I've, I've never really seen a container or a food truck that's generally open in the winter. So that's, that's where I'm kind of like, you know, I've heard that there's, uh, you know, insulation issues with an old building, whether it's hot or cold. And I'm assuming with containers, you know, my limited knowledge is that, you know, that's even a bigger issue probably. So how, how do you, how do you run a, depending on what's in the container, as a business, I'm thinking a food service type of thing. You know, how is it going to be open in the winter when the water is going to freeze?
Sure. And, uh, well, first off, it doesn't have to be food. Uh, we were talking about rental as well. And we want to really look at except those individuals that lease space, they're, they're, you know, paying for that because they, they should have some sort of ability to choose what they serve and service to release. So, uh, I think there's a lot of options and thoughts that we had of personally of what we could try to do. Whether that is, as you've said earlier today, uh, tomato soup and, and a grilled cheese sandwich or, you know, hot coffee or hot cocoa, um, outside there, that's something. So we don't want to limit it. Uh, I think most likely, uh, when you come into December, January, maybe February, will probably be a lot less of the promotion in that activity. Uh, but that's it for the world. That was Scott's world.
Question maybe a little bit more specifically, you know, um, you brought up the question, right? Like container would be cold in the, uh, you know, we can, you can, you can build these out. I mean, they'll be insulated. These can be wonderful homes. You can put showers and you know what I mean? You can build these out to be absolutely anything you want. And so, you know, we would be providing them containers that have the opportunity to be opened in the tin shed.
Okay. I mean, I've heard of container homes. So, yeah.
It's very similar.
Sure. Thanks.
Yeah. So the first, the first question was tenants. This is, we're still in the beginning stages when I say we, all of us, as far as getting things for sure. But at this point, we have three ancillary tenants that have committed to this with us and one acre tenant that's also again, these are intention. And how that plays out, it's an ever-growing, ever-changing, you know, conversation. But, uh, we think we've talked about it earlier during the presentation, Tracy mentioned with ancillary and summertime. Moon kayak rental will be based on there, bicycle rental based on there. These will all be outside of the actual depot building and their own, like, upon them kiosks, their own small structures that are built in a way that they have a similar design to the depot. They bring in some of those architectural elements, put them in these small buildings. These are summertime activities. I know as good as anybody, the weather changes, those businesses also go away. So, uh, part of the plan and part of the feedback from the community is what do you do in the winter time? And that's why it was important for us to have anchor tenants be there consistently year round so that everybody in the community could know there is going to be different places. Whether it's for lunch, whether it's events, um, you know, some of the events we've talked about. The amount of brainstorming that has happened in my head for two years, you guys, last year. There is no shortage of ideas what we want to do, but one common theme that we have all noticed is it's always just as an example, Friday night football game, everybody loves the Friday night football game, battery morning. It would be great to have a show the highlights of that football game. We can highlight our student athletes. We can highlight artistic students, uh, music students, students who win. Bringing those kids forefront, not just in their school, but in the community. And then also, well, story key, making sure that not just that building. It's observed, it's pointed out, well, this architecture in this building, we want to make sure the entire community, the entire village has a canvas to brag about itself, to show its history, to like be proud of. Uh, and that's something that we're going to do year round in that school. So the amount of things that are going to happen, we intend to have special events. I would be agreeing with the others. We've come up with quite a few ideas more than.
It was earlier mentioned that there's a lot of festivals going on in this area and that's true. You know, we always watch people going to those festivals, right? You know, we always watch people going to those festivals, right? People from Belleville go to Nuclearis, people from Belleville go, you know, elsewhere for these festivals and things like that. Our goal here, along with all the new business that's going on in Belleville, is to make this destination Belleville, right? So people will stay here. People will come to Belleville. That's the goal. We're not looking to reinvent the wheel with festivals or anything like that. We want to make Destination Belleville a reality, right? We've been all working to do that for, I don't know how long, and it's finally kind of here. So that's the goal. Sorry.
Last but not least, are there board members that have questions that are real, non-financial related?
I just wanted to add one thing. Is where it sounds like we're wrapping up. We really appreciate the time from the village. And also, just so you know, there is, I've been talking to the DOT, there are some other things that I'd be happy to share with the other team too. Down the road.
Does anybody have questions?
Working hard, a relatively new business, you know, working hard to expand. Johnny O's has just made a big investment downtown. Are you guys looking for businesses? You talked about your anchor businesses that have already committed or you guys are looking for containers? Are you looking for businesses that are going to be banned or operated? Don't turn to having this town. Because I would hate to turn our backs a little bit on businesses that are here. Riverdale, I mean, businesses are here all now and it's really been working hard with, you know, it's a challenging time, maybe not with kind of the support. We're all really good about going to help, spend our money and not stay in town. So I'm wondering about your emphasis on that and a commitment to working with businesses.
Yeah. So not only are the ancillary tenants, obviously people that live here in town, already have businesses here in town, are anchor tenant. Everybody knows them. So everybody knows John, Johnny O's people. He also is very familiar with this town. He's very familiar with the menu that he has, the gaps in it, what else he can do. So both him and I have come up with all kinds of ideas, along with other folks, on what other types of menu can be that will differentiate, not just his two restaurants, differentiate everything in town from what we can do there that's new. And that can be an ongoing, ever-changing, ever-evolving menu. In fact, that's something we've talked about because not only do you want some consistent things, especially kids menus, that kind of stuff that parents put on on adults. You like to go out and have a little bit of variety, a little bit of option. And so you always have to have that be an evolving thing. And that's something that John and I have talked about. And one of the other things that I set out to do, John was one of the first guys I talked to. I also talked to a few other local businesses, of which it's a heat-up from the old garage. So that's the first place I would do, our local community, try to do something that would not just benefit the existing businesses, existing small businesses, but it would also be different because we already know it's here because we live there. So let's do something a little bit different with that.
And thank you for the question. One of the things, since we've been pursuing this for well over a year and Kelly and I have been attending a lot of village board meetings and learning a lot about the processes, how it works. Unfortunately, how slowly it moves sometimes. But at the same time, the village board has to think in terms of decades and they're looking out decades now for that. And I thank them for that because it's thankless work. Because I've attended these meetings with Kelly, we've seen a lot that I probably wouldn't know if I hadn't. And I'm going to talk specifically about the development plans for future Belleville. So Bell West is obviously up, running. There's houses being added on a weekly basis. There's discussions of another development coming to Belleville that is going to be across from the grocery store, right on the bike path. There was a recent discussion of another development proposal that will be south of town, along the bike path. While we're thinking of our local community and the businesses that are here now, we're also thinking about the next Kelly Hickman that comes to town in the next 10 years and the 500 other homes that are going to follow. And what are they going to need? And do we as a community have the capacity to take this on? Which, having lived here a long time, I would say we do not. We've watched all these other communities, our neighboring communities, experience growth. Corona in particular, Oregon's having it, and Bon Horb's exploded. So these other communities that are in our area have seen this grow and we're next. It's happened. It's, Belleville's been this nice tranquil little 2,000-person town since, you know, I've grown up. And we can't control that. That's out of our control. It's in Belleville's best interest to grow. And we just don't have the retail space that we need in this community to achieve that goals and keep our citizens here, as Paul said, Destination Belleville. So while we're thinking about the local businesses and community members now, we're also thinking the ones that'll be here 10 years from now, attending these meetings, sitting in these positions, how our plan, our long-term plan to help grow that. Every tree needs roots.
To add, provide a little context to Casey's point. If the developments happen the way we think they're going to happen and the annexations happen the way we think they're going to happen, 1,100 new units in the next eight to 10 years, which is about doubling the population in 10. So that's, there is a population boom that what he just referenced is, if the developer does what he thinks he's going to do, the board approves it as he's wanting it to be done. I'm not saying that they will, but if it's done the way they, the developer wants, it is 1,100 new units in the next 10 years. So.
For the question of, remind the crowd, the question was about the local businesses and tenants, right? And the anchor tenants. And as Derek said, we're looking at operating the building itself as the anchor tenant. Still a pretty light duty, light duty offering. And we are looking at local tenants to build these kind of containers. Some of the things that we've been talking about is giving preferential lease terms to local businesses as well as negotiable lease duration. And the sort of sentence with that is, you know, if you're, you have a bakery, right? You're doing sourdough at the farmer's market and you're looking to expand it a little bit beyond that. Now maybe you could have three days a week at a, an offering here at the, you know, at a container here at the yard. These containers, I think, have a huge opportunity to, to take you a little bit, you know, from like Etsy shop to container ship to maybe like full-blown retail. And I also think that they're good for small businesses who are really getting off the ground because you could, two tenants could share one space. And so I think that, again, we all think about who's going into these, which I think a lot of us will. But thinking about small retail components, there's a lot of flexibility, which I think yields a lot of opportunity. Does that answer your question a little bit?
I just had one question for the second group. You mentioned that on the north side of the, the building, you'd be putting, you know, renovating for a new restroom. South side. Okay. That's, that's where I got my, I know it's wrong. So that would be on the south side. So in your, your drawings, I know they're just concepts, but it showed a stage. Was that going to be on the north side then? Or, you know, it looked, the stage, it kind of looked like either it was an addition or, you know, you, you just opened up, took the walls out. But then there was a whole nother train station there. So.
Yeah.
I'm like, when's that coming in?
Paul's a marketing guy and, no, so the, the actual layout of that space, if you want to start at the south and walk yourself north, first and foremost, there would probably be a privacy effect. That would keep some noise from going to Connie's house. And then that would then be the back of the stage, be towards Connie's house, front of the stage, be angled and spaced so it would go through the opening between the depot and, and the current post office. That opening that would go then to library park. The music that would be on that stage would be allowed to spill into the public area instead of into the neighborhood area. And then as you keep going forward, there'd be open space from that stage to the building itself. Now, the only addition is going to be on the south end of that building, just for the three bathrooms. And then you have the depot building itself as it sits. We'd be rebuilding the ramp as originally, the original location to a degree as it was, that would serve as PDA access as well as bringing back the door element. And then beyond that, once you get to the north side of the building, that's where we envision those ancillary small buildings that would have. It's the shop, ice cream shop. And then parking would be inside of the building. Majority of that space, which I don't know if anyone was over there last week, spilled the car. So that would stay parking and then a little bit of green space in the very southeast corner. Because I, remember, there's no sidewalks currently. So that space would be utilized again for passerbyers walking, place for kids to sit. And, and we're going to guarantee a lot of the brainstorming. There's going to be activities for kids on site. We just haven't refined it to a place.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll ask a question. Of the proposals, and I think I saw the maps, but can you describe a little bit more about what portion of, let's say, the interior of the actual depot would be community-based, meaning it's not going to require an entry fee? It's not going to require a reservation to have an event? It's going to be true community accessible?
Two-thirds of that interior that's in there would be part of the design. Also, where the original ticketing, those kind of things would be third highlighted, light as well as black. Read about them, their historical marking, the brick on the brick walls and their crates, all that kind of stuff. Third, open it.
And other than restrooms, same, there's no private or renovation area.
Nope. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Thank you all. First of all, thank you guys for the presentations. It's been great, I think. Hopefully the community, thank you.
We do have time for public comment.
What was the question?
Public comment.
Generally, I think what the village board decided at the last board meeting was, keep your comments to three minutes. We do have a time factor at play. So three minutes. If you have a second comment, let anybody else who has not made a comment, make their comment before you try to make a second comment. And then if you want to just stand up at the front and...
I'll walk around. I'm happy to.
Hi, Connie Urfer. I was raised outside of Puyolai. And I can tell you, I know you're not going to like this, but I'm glad I don't live there anymore because that would drive me nuts. I live next to the depot. I've lived in Belleville almost 50 years. That depot has been in my eyesight. I heard the train go by every night. And most, some of you know how much the depot means to me. The only reason I got on CDA was to save that building. And Catherine, I really enjoyed meeting you. We had a good talk. We had a good time. She's got wonderful ideas and you guys got wonderful ideas. And I told her, you know, you guys should all just get together because you got great ideas. But here we go with the zip code. I feel that this group of men have really put their heart and soul into this for a few years. And I think that Belleville owes it to our Belleville people to give this bid to them because they are, this building means so much to them. And I think you should stop and think about who's going to take, I mean, I'm not saying they, you won't take care. That's not what I mean at all. I mean, their hearts are going to be in this because they're from here. And I'm hoping, as a taxpayer, I'm hoping that you vote for the Belleville people to get this depot. That's about all I got to say. But Catherine, like I said, it was fun. I think I bamboozled her when I first met her. I, I'm not a snowmobiler, but I'm kind of surprised that we're not talking about any winter activities. And so to both groups, I really think that winter activities would, would be something to think about. Oh, I'm thinking like an ice rink, that sort of thing. The snowmobilers know where the bars are. But there could be, there could be winter activities there very, very easily. I'm good. Sorry.
Ian, can you give him the microphone?
A lot of banter on snowmobiling for the virtual people.
Also, I'm going to ask people in the audience, if you'll please state your name just before you talk. I know you Barb. It's okay. But for everybody else, just for the record, so that we can have accuracy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is David Ace. And I hate to beat this, this container thing, but I'm still kind of confused. What do I get for my lease? Do I get electricity? Is there plumbing? It seems like a food truck, its, its purpose is to be self-sufficient. I'm not really sure what the container does. Does the container provide seating? Is it a place to prepare your food?
The containers are small little shipping containers. Here's a picture of them right here. And the way that the site is prepared, is prepared for them is it's, it's basically a concrete pad and then you have like more or less RV hookups. You have waste going out, you have water coming in. You could have a little bit of a grill top. You can have a mini split in there. They'll be very well insulated. You have kind of serving, you know, you could do little porches off front. We can do seating out there. Flip the tops up like this. There's a company that makes a prefab called Fox Pop, maybe, there's several. But you can also kind of, you know, restaurant supply stainless steel it together yourself, meet yourself, meaning they can be customized yourself. So meaning with a general contractor. So they could be customized whether you're, you know, you could, you could take a massage chair and bolt it down at the bottom and do like chair massages.
So there's no preparation of food in these things? You have to prepare the food at another location?
And we are, one of the containers will be a large commissary kitchen. So you basically go into like a big wood footer, you get your prep boards.
And then the, the restrooms that are in the building or is there a container for? Thank you both. Other questions? Other questions?
Marion Vinnie. Marion Vinnie, I'm just wondering if Belleville is prepared to offer the services with all this, police, fire, the mask.
Service question for the board in consideration.
Dave, you want to field that or try to?
I have a monthly technical staff meeting with our partners at EMS, Fire, the chief, building inspector, attorneys to keep them up to date on projects and all of that. A large part of our budgeting process, which we are doing on Monday next week, to be projected to the village board at the week after, is looking forward, the 10 years. We just started our first capital improvement plan. We've begun our financial management planning that goes out there in the next five years. So obviously, there's a lot to happen. There's a lot of growth that is still yet to be determined, but all of our... But all of our partners, all of the village, our two presenters here, know what's coming. And it's kind of, at that point, we take it as we can. But yes, we are fully aware and prepared to handle that when it does arrive.
Okay, my name's Lori Lazarus rescue and I've been a member of this community for 30 years now. My first comment to your team, I love both presentations. You guys, I hope when you go and work on it more, work on that part for the children more because we're getting all these new houses coming in. And as we know, these new houses are going to be young families. So that's a huge component, I think, of what this project is. My comment to the board is, when I was looking over these proposals on your website, I saw that this group also had in there about the public library, which I understand is, will be separate. I just want to make sure, when you go into making your decisions, you really remember that that is separate. Not looking at this group can provide this, and yeah, we got a way into maybe getting rid of the library easily too. I just want it viewed as this project, so they both are on a fair ground.
Other comments from the community?
Do you want me to read the comments? So I have a couple of comments that residents gave that wanted us to read them. The second presentation was well put together. The board should select this group, Hickman, Francois, Fonseca, and Nemec. They will do a great job. How was the yard's proposal allowed to be presented tonight when it did not meet the RFP deadline? That was discussed already by Broadwing. And then bringing in economic development and growth is great, but we must also consider the infrastructure to support it. Current of the depot is a lot, is a lot used for the farmer's market, but possibly more importantly, parking for every single community event held in the library park. Most people should probably agree that the congestion in Palo Alto on the weekends is not ideal. Is bringing in something with the aim to grow the economy worth harming those community events due to the lack of parking? And I won't specify too much, but the village is, we are discussing a lot of parking. Downtown buildings were not provided a lot of parking. And the village, the plan commission did just approve a site plan for the 1917 garage, which will be a great addition to downtown. But parking was brought up there and will continue to be brought up there. So the village board is well aware of that. Village staff, village engineers, fire and EMS are well aware of that. And we are trying to figure out what the best solutions are in, in our zoning code and all that. So do know that we are fully, that is a top of mind when we are reviewing any plan.
I think I'm going to turn this back over to Jeff for the formality of the meeting, but I want to thank all of you on, on our team's behalf of the community and their engagement. It's been a real pleasure to work with all of you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next, I think, is closed session, if I'm not mistaken, no, or reports? We can, yeah, we can do reports. So reports from board members, their boards, commissions, and committees. First EMS district board annual meeting. Deb, anything more? Plan commission, I think we talked about stuff that would be there. Library board, anything there? Nope. Sorry. Sorry. Police committee, obviously, we're doing Thursday night. We've got the interview process for that. Finance and governance, we're doing finalization of the budget on Monday. Correct. Right? And community development.
Looking into a vibrant spaces grant. It's a matching grant of $50,000 to $100,000, so.
Okay. Okay, so next on the agenda is to go to closed session. So the village of Belleville village board will enter into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin state statute, 19.85 subsection 1 subsection E, for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified businesses. Whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, the village board may reconvene into open session and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. And this is related to establishing a negotiating position regarding the village depot property. Do I have a motion? Motion by Maxine, seconded by Deb. And we have to do this in roll call vote.
Yes, we do. Trustee Bannon.
Yep.
Trustee Kazmar. Trustee Ward. Trustee Ziegler.
Yes.
There we go. Trustee Zerbus.
Yes.
President Larson. All right, we are in closed session.